This is Sarah Mallish, the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'll call the Zoning Board of Appeals to order at 7:01 PM on Wednesday, May 17. I have with me tonight Jim Dietrich, James Mitchell, Catherine Howe, and Brian Solis. The... We will be switching the order of the applications because the first applicants are not here yet. Okay? So we will start the application of Ellen Smith. And the way this works is that you will present your project. Then we will ask questions. Then we'll ask if any members of the public wish to be recognized. Then we'll discuss it and hopefully reach a decision.
And just so you guys know, there are people from the internet that could also comment. It's open, so it's that, you know, we have to open it to them as well. When we open some, we won't be surprised if there's someone talking and you're like, that's funny.
Okay. With that, I will open the public hearing for the application of Ellen Smith for a special permit under Sections 4.2. E5, 2.0, and 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw and/or other relief as may be necessary for the installation of a 15-foot by 30-foot gonite swimming pool with an automatic pool cover and fence, a 13-Ancient County Way, Assessors' map number 13, lot number 11 in District A, filed with the town clerk on March 28, 2023. So if you would like to present the application, please state your name.
Up here or do we just...
Or sit or... You can do either.
Well, my name is Michael Oaks and I never... So whatever, I might be a little bad at it. But I built Eleanor Pool previously in Wenham, and she's moved to your town, so she'd like another one. I own Bay Rock Pools, who's a company that would like to do it. I believe, I mean, we... As in the drawing or whatever, the plot plan. So existing coverage right now is 3,618 square feet. We would like to add 580 square feet to that, making a total of 4,198. And the lot size right now is 39,560. So in... I had spoken to the...
19,120, right?
What's that?
19,000?
None of these numbers are legit.
No, 39,560.
You said 4,198.
Combine both lots. They did them both together.
What do you mean?
There was originally, I don't know if you have... So you know if you look at this...
Just say on here, 39,560.
If you look at this, originally it was two.
The application is incorrect. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So originally there was two. And we were gonna do it on just the one, but they combined them all into one big lot.
Okay.
I think, didn't Gail say to go with that 19,000 number?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, either way, so we went with the 39,560, right? And at that, I was told by the building inspector that the maximum lot coverage was 30%. And currently it's at 9.1%. And once we would add the pool, it would make it at 10.5%.
Okay.
So we're...
Look at this.
And then on, on this...
Hold on just a minute. So you own two lots?
Yes.
I guess, I just purchased 13-Ancient County Way, one acre.
Okay.
May, I don't know technically.
Yeah, and originally it showed it as being just the house in one in a corner, like a little triangle off of that. But they're combined to make the 39,560. And that's what, you know, the surveyor went off of everything to do with that too. And even originally, I had done calculations off of the 19,000. You know what I mean? But we were still under the 30% if we wanted to go that way too.
You did them for both, I think.
I did.
They weren't sure which one you'd want.
Yep.
Well, the pool's not in the 19,000 square foot.
It is.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
But either way, it looks like it's under.
Yeah.
Yeah, either way you looked at it, it was still gonna be under the 30% by a reasonable amount. So currently, you guys asked for a 40-foot rear setback, and we are at 85, right? And 45 feet, we're at on the side where you call for a 20-foot. And then in the front, we're at 75 where you call for a 30-foot. And the only thing that we added differently was we added the fence to it around the drawing now. So we had put the fence at five feet out from the pool. So that would make the side setback at 40 to the fence, the rear setback at 80, and then the front setback at 70.
From the fence to the lot, like?
From the fence, yeah.
So does that mean that the door outside is outside of the fence?
It is.
Okay.
It is. Yeah, I was gonna go kinda to where the bulkhead is.
Okay, see that?
We were gonna make it so it would just... Yeah, yep, it was just gonna connect right in. So this will be a little larger area for...
And there's the apron around the pool, that's the only...
So normally, a lot of times we'll do a large, but on this, we were only gonna do a foot and a half. So basically, just cover the top of the pool and get the skimmers encompassed in it. So it'll be grass up to that.
That's the, that's the, set to the impervious, you're saying?
Yep, yep. That's why the pool's only 450, but we've got 580. And I don't know what else, I remember questions.
My understanding, you're gonna have an automatic cover?
We are. And that's made by a company called Aquomatic. And it's hydraulically operated one. And it will have a key switch that you're not swimming unless you turn the key. You know, and I know the state of Massachusetts has adopted that if you have an automatic cover, you don't need a fence, but I know you guys still want.
Right, will you require a four-foot?
Yep.
High fence? We haven't gotten up to...
We haven't caught up yet here.
We still call them swimming holes.
And then the only lights will be within the pool itself, LED, low voltage LED.
No railings of any kind, just corner steps. And I had shown, I didn't know you guys... So this is a... There's a blueprint of the... Yeah. So showing the automatic cover and just a set of corner steps.
Oh, great.
And a little bench in the deep end on it.
Nice addition.
They're in charge of the detail.
I'm in charge of the detail.
So no diving board, it looks like a...
No diving. No, Helen just likes to float around. I've seen her many times.
It's not the motor that...
Any other questions?
No. I think it's very straightforward.
Is there any member of the public who would like to speak on the application? I'll first ask people in the room. Nope? Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be recognized? If so, please raise your hand in Zoom. At the bottom of the screen.
Wait a minute, was that on TV?
Yep.
You're famous now.
We've only had one hit.
So are you... Do you need to make a motion?
Yes, please.
Please do. I move to close the public hearing and approve the application of Ellen Smith for a special permit under Sections 4.2. EF, 2.2, 2.0, and 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw and/or other relief as may be necessary to install a 15-foot by 30-foot gonite swimming pool with an automatic cover, a four-foot high fence with locking gates, a long, we don't need long doors, and low voltage LED lights within the pool at 13-Ancient County Way, Assessors' map number 13, lot number 11 in District A, filed with the town clerk on March 28, 2023. Based on a finding, the proposed pool is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, will not be more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it is located, and all requirements and conditions under Section 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw for the grant of a special permit have been met based on the following condition. The pool and fence are located as depicted in the site plan prepared by EPS Associates LLC dated April 28, 2023 with the hand-drawn fence. And all lighting shall be low voltage LED contained within the pool lots. And that the four-foot fence shall conform with all specifications of the Manchester zoning bylaw and the Massachusetts Building Act. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jim? Talk louder.
Sorry, Brian, but he can write the decision.
Are we ready to vote? Jim?
I agree.
James?
Approved.
Catherine? Approved. Brian?
Yes.
And Sarah approves. Who would like to write it?
I've been writing one for a while, so I...
Okay.
I'd like to sit at the right hand of the master.
Brian, who is your... Other fence.
Oh, wait. The same drawing, right? This, that one has the fence.
Yeah, I know.
Keep them both. This one.
Solid plan.
In the pool thing, yeah. So you're all set?
I think I was on it, I couldn't.
Ah, me too. The decision will be written within 90 days. Hopefully soon, right, Jim?
Sure.
Once, my Jim, once you... Once the decision is filed with the town clerk, there's a 20-day appeal period. The building inspector will issue a permit and allow you to proceed at your own risk of that 20 days.
After this is done, then, after we get this part of the...
This decision has to be filed with the town clerk before he'll issue a building permit. And if you proceed within that 20-day appeal period, somebody could appeal the decision and you'd have to underlie it. So that's why I get that.
That's it, yours is done.
Are you done, you can go to the game?
I have one more, one more, one more hearing.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Good luck.
The next, now we'll go back to the first application.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna write, Brian's gonna check it?
I'm gonna learn from the master.
Okay.
Sit at the right hand of Brian.
So I now will open the public hearing for the application of Todd Peratori, TJP Design Group LLC, on behalf of Susan King, for a special permit under Sections 5.4, 7.2, and 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw and/or other relief as may be necessary for the reconstruction of a detached garage to connect it to the house such that it maintains the footprint on the north side and increases importment into the setback on the east and south side of Four North Street, Assessors' map number 51, lot number 21 in District D, filed with the town clerk on March 28, 2023. So who's here to present this application?
I'm on Zoom.
Okay. Could you state, please state your name and...
Todd Peratori.
Okay.
All right. So are you ready? Should I begin?
Yep, go ahead.
All right, so we would like to, well, we have two things. One is we want to rebuild or replace the garage with one that, well, will fit a car. And the second, and in order, so that it's currently a non-conforming lot. And we don't actually, although the drawing, we need to, there's a slight... There's a hiccup on the drawing. It actually shows that we're making it more non-conforming. We'll actually, we'll move the building forward so that we don't make it more non-conforming. We maintain the rear setback of .93 feet. But, so that's as an accessory building. The catch is, is that we'd also like to correct or connect the garage. And for all intents and purposes, it's currently connected. There's one about 19 inches between the garage and the mudroom currently. And so we can't, you know, it's not functional space. So that, that's the bigger hiccup that we need to discuss tonight. But otherwise, we're, the hope is to make it, you know, stay within the non-conformity on the back-to-back and stay and not make it worse to the side.
Yeah, I, I, I think that if you're... So the setbacks for an accessory structure are different than for an attached garage.
This is the...
Yeah, so in District D, the side setback for a primary structure is 10 feet and for an accessory structure is 5 feet. And the rear setback is 10 feet for a primary structure and 5 feet for a detached structure. And the, what we have indicates that the existing garage conforms, currently conforms with a side setback.
Correct.
But it does not conform with the rear setback.
Correct.
If you're altering a non-conforming structure, we can issue a special permit if it does not make it more non-conforming. The problem is, is if you attach it to the house, a variance would be required. And a variance was not applied for.
Correct. All of these things are correct. And our whole, well, go ahead.
And in addition, is that the, what we have, the documents submitted to us show us as you're going more into the rear setback. I think you said...
Right, we will, we will correct that.
But if you move it forward, because the garage is not parallel to the side lot line, you're gonna go further into the side setback.
Well, prob, well, we would bump it closer to the house to make sure that that works. So that we stay under, well, we stay under the five-foot accessory building. Which I understand is a...
No longer an accessory building.
For an accessory building, right. So there, so our, our hope, well, we talked to, we talked it over ahead of time with a couple of different people. And our hope was that, that for all intents and purposes, it is connected since we can't use that space and we can't put a door between the spaces and still need fire code. And it's visually connected and you have to look square on to see that it's not connected. So that was our hope. But we, we also understand that, that, you know, it's not connected. And that we might, you know, that there might be a consequence to that.
Well, it looks like if we're being asked to approve this, they'd need a variance or a special permit, a variance.
A variance and attach it.
A variance was not included in the public hearing, which would mean it would have to be continued and it would have to be re-noticed in a public hearing as a variance.
What if it's covered but not attached? What if the walk, that 19 inches is covered but not actually attached?
Well, don't they also want to move the garage closer and effectively fill that gap?
No, they want to connect, that's where they want to make the connection.
He said he was pushing the garage over too.
To comply with the lot, no, that's what I heard too. You can keep it out, out of the five-foot. So that would be, that 19 inches might be seven inches or something.
Yeah, yeah, they're still connecting it, it was, Jim?
It, it appears to me that it would be smarter to set this up as an application for a variance. Attach the garage to the house because I spoke to the homeowner and I think she would prefer to be able to walk out of her house and into her garage without going out in the weather. And certainly that makes sense. There is room to do that. It's just a matter of granting a variance to do it. My sense is that considering the age of the house and the size of these lots in that district, that it's likely that a variance would be approved. However, to do that, they would have to send us proper documentation showing exactly what they intend to do with that, under that variance. Right now, it's like, well, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that, we're gonna move it here, move there. That's fine, and I understand it. But to do it, we have to kind of nail it down and make sure that it's consistent so that there's a record.
I agree with Jim. What I heard was a lot of, with the planning of doing this, we're gonna do that.
It's not draw it that way or present it that way. No, I mean, we've gone down this road many, many times because the homeowners frequently either, they simply don't understand the process or in the process of looking at the project, you make changes. And so I think that that would be the cleanest way to do it. And my sense is, once we have that in front of us, it probably will be approved.
They'll need to prove, demonstrate hardship.
Yeah. And the hardship, and you can demonstrate the hardship and that's not hard to do. And that would make it very...
What, what would our hardship be, do you think? I mean, we were told that...
That's for you to determine.
All right, well, I can tell you what we were told. We were told that there's no other way to have a connected garage on the site and be conforming.
Yes.
Does that seem like, does that seem reasonable?
That's part of the hardship.
The hardship was...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, let me read you, I mean, we're not gonna...
No, we, we...
All right, we, I understand.
I will read you what the requirements are for a variance, if I can find it. Not here.
I think move it again, the new ones to the old ones.
Sorry, we have brand-new bylaws and I can't find anything anymore. 12-point something. Does anybody remember what, oh, what 7-point something was?
It was 7-point.
7.2, right? What an excessive doubt.
Variance, 12.4.6. The Board of Appeals may grant upon appeal or upon petition with respect to particular land or structures a variance from special, specific requirements of the bylaw only where, after notice and public hearing, as required by the zoning act, the Board of Appeals specifically finds that owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape, or topography of land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of this bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this bylaw.
Okay.
Clear as mud?
Perfect. What is the date on the current bylaw? I have 8/22 is my most current.
It's March 2, 2023. Basically, the bylaw was all renumbered.
So no one can find anything.
But the wording is supposed to be the same.
So I'm correct.
So we're still becoming familiar with it. Okay.
All right, so we will resubmit.
Okay. Before you go there, let me see if there's public comment on this application since the public hearing. Is there anybody in the room that would like to comment? Yes, ma'am, would you please state your name and address?
I'm Karen Tina Gates. I represent the One Eight Hundred Trust. Before anybody builds in that property, we approached, we have been here for quite some time, 38 years. My husband's mother purchased this property worth about a, about a
Okay.
of 39 schools. And she bought it in '76. Martin, my father-in-law died. And she was a summer resident, so she lived here only in summertime. The property of, there is a King at the time, property, was starting from the upper part coming down to school street with the in-and-out area, which was 26 point... I will, I will give you copies of what I have, you can keep them.
Are you talking about her property or something?
Well, I don't know the lady.
Are you the lady?
I am. I sent you some last night.
Okay.
Anyway, I'm talking about that property.
And what, what's, what you're trying to make?
Everybody should have the right to build, in my opinion, in the property that they buy. But this property has issues from the beginning. And these are letters with a written, from my mother in law time, to Lisa King, she refused to do anything about it. Then we contacted the real estate agency when they put in the market in '21 that maybe we should correct the boundary before anybody sells it. Even the realtor at the time agreed that it had other issues because in part of the property, the actual building was not registered. And I have photographs of everything. So these are also letters to their...
Well, that would be something you would deal with in Landport, not with the zoning board of appeals.
But if you're giving him a permit, why would you give a permit for something to drop back when actually...
The structure's already there.
That it, it built, yes, but they built on our property.
We can't serve it.
And I think that, I think the part of...
Title was issued.
If you look, if you...
A title was issued on this property, correct?
They moved the titles. Yes, but Mr. Glavsky, the lawyer at the purchase of the property, refused to do anything about it. And we wrote back and forth in emails, a lot of emails. Our lawyer said, I would find maybe another lawyer, although we are still having him as our lawyer because this is a conflict of interest because he had just joined Mr. Glavsky's agency. So we don't want to go to court. We don't want payments and all that stuff because they have built on our side. That's a long time ago. But nobody, and we have the letters from the sequence of my husband's mother from 2003 telling us, she died in 2006, that she was good in records and she left all kinds of things. That property from the initial time when she bought it, the people who bought it did wrong things. So that's what was happening and nobody fixed it. So we tried before Lisa King's children sold it for the next buyer, like Mrs. King. We thought it was a relative, that's why we didn't get in touch.
So...
They refused to do anything, they said, we don't care.
When I, when I look at this map, it looks to me like Four North Street is the Gorman property. Is that not correct?
Do you see, do you see North Street?
Yes, and, and the Gorman property
That is the King, Lisa King.
Goes to the corner of North Street.
That Lisa King's property, which is now the lady, Mrs. King, currently another one.
So it's not A or B on this map? No, okay.
Our boundary line is the red line, actually, is the town.
There's no red line here.
It's on...
So I, I just don't understand what the issue is.
Well, when the house was, if you look at the papers, there are all the answers there. If, when, when...
I couldn't make headspace out of the...
Mrs. Lisa King, I will have to say her first name so we don't confuse her
You're on this one.
With the current person who has nothing to do with all this. She just got involved in it by just buying the property. She, my mother-in-law came home from Florida and she found Lisa King having an addition pool to her house over the property.
What year was that?
That was back in '85, '07, and Lisa never registered it.
What do you mean registered?
She never even put it in the town record. So it wasn't even properly put in. A lot of people did things.
The house is there today?
Of course it is.
At Four North Street.
I'm talking about the addition. If you look at the addition, I have also a photograph of the current survey that enabled it that also has a binding to Lisa King on... that also has abiding to Lisa King uh on the Desmond side. The abiding there side. And it's two feet away from the garage, the abiding line, you can see the photographs.
Right, that's correct.
And it goes all the way down twenty six feet point one, which is our property, twenty six feet.
Okay.
So that building that is now there, the addition to the main structure.
There is no addition to the main structure.
But you see, that's what I'm saying, it was never registered as a new addition.
Excuse me, let's just speak.
Yes.
There's a detached garage there, which is not.
I'm not talking about the garage, the garage is separate. It has a space between the house.
She she's referring to a mudroom that's attached to the main house.
Yes.
Okay.
You get it, the picture.
Okay, interesting.
And if you see, if you see the photograph that has a marker, that is Lisa King who brought a surveyor and her sons refused to give me the name of the surveyor at the time when I was questioned. Um, that is, we took a picture. She was a little bit of a, you know, character, she had a baby done, she was shooting wildlife and if they shot, she made a hole in our window, so we finally decided to put the fence where the wire fence was on that part of the property, yeah, the front part she had put.
And this is the mudroom actually. And it's not as a.
So it's on somebody else's property.
I hope that's on some, this might be.
So the the actual boundary of the of Lisa, it's right next to her house past the house.
So the garage is way on someone else's.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, so we, what we discussed with them back then, and I would offer the same thing, we don't want any money because they built on our part, but since they're going to build, at least it would be good to make the line where it is at the corner, which is about two feet away from the house, the current fence where we have temporary because she was shooting, so we put a fence there with an opening, we haven't closed it all this time. And so if you look at the map, can you see the map of the town, the front page? Yes, okay, there there, if we go really right to the twenty six feet down, we go through that mudroom. It what, we take it down, we want money for what they did, I I don't need anything like this.
But the survey, it was not reasonable.
The survey, Mister Glavsky did it after we had gotten in touch with him and he never.
You know, we just had one done a a month ago.
I'm sorry, but you talk.
Excuse me, Mrs. Gates. You're you're out of order at this point.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You've you've had your say, thank you.
Well, because we didn't understand.
I understand.
Mr. Peratori, what would you like to say?
We we just had a survey done, I mean, very recent, I mean, I guess in February and
Right.
now, I I'm not, I don't know whether that there is some exception to how that survey was done, but it was done by Jay Giroux, he's licensed. Uh, but I mean, that's all that I have to go on and that's, that shows it within, I mean, it's still not performed, obviously, but it shows that mudroom within Susan's property line.
Correct, that's the, that's the information we have, is that all the structures on this property are within the bounds of the property, very close to the property line, but within the bounds of the property.
So may I ask, are ours wrong?
We don't know.
Yes, that's.
From the beginning.
We don't know, we don't know.
That's outside of the bounds of the zoning board of appeals.
Because that was the King, ours was signed by the town.
I I'm sorry, this is outside of the bounds of the zoning board of appeals. If you have an issue regarding a property line, you need to hire an attorney and work with Mrs. King's attorney and figure out whether you need to go to Land Court to redraw the boundary.
Well, I'm so sorry that when we found out that a King bought it, we thought it was one of the brothers, decided to buy the house, one of the two sons that's in there.
But it.
We didn't know because they refused to do anything, we said, okay.
Well, everything we have before us is saying that the structures are validly on the property. And that's what we have to rely on.
So all the, so all the past records that we have in record from seventy six, they are wrong.
No.
Well, I'm I'm sorry. I know, I know, but nobody will do illegal.
The, if this addition was built in nineteen eighty four.
Yes.
Um, that is well out of the the bounds of having anything done to it, once it's been there for ten years.
Well, then you had this older woman who was in her seventies whenever they did it
Uh, it's out.
and um she didn't want to go to court, she just thought Lisa was.
I I'm sorry, I I I can't help what was done in the past. The fact of the matter is that we have a survey before us that indicates there's not an issue with the structure, except for the fact that it approaches into the setback, but it doesn't approach into somebody else's property.
The yellow marker, you don't see the color now, it's a black and white photograph, the marker, the marker behind the garage
I'm looking at what was.
is a yellow marker in the black and white photograph. It's not ours, our neighbors did a survey for their property, we're abiding with them and it goes also to Lisa King's property and their surveyor, yellow marker is still there and Lisa King's behind the garage, you can see it tomorrow if you want. And it is showing that, Mrs. King, do you agree that it's there because we just took a picture today? That's the picture today. We couldn't find it last night, it was, well, it was among the friends there.
Right.
Yes, friends there, and the the name of the people are Guto, they're the neighbors and I talked to them and they said, well, we know it's two feet in her property, but we don't care, we can take the front, whatever. So it's not that I'm speaking like a dream, it's just facts that I had, that's all.
Thank you.
Seems to me that there's some things that have to be resolved before they come back to us.
Well, I I I I don't think that we get involved in property lines.
No, 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 we don't, we don't, I mean, we've already discussed the fact that we should each come back as a special permit.
But but.
That's as far as, everything else, that's up to their lawyers and.
It'd be a variance.
A variance.
A variance, right.
Um, is there any member, um, anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak on this application? Then I'm gonna suggest that we continue this matter to our June meeting. Um, I need the applicant
to.
to request that.
I still have my architect's.
Right, we will request, we will request that, and so what we should do in the meantime then is is correct the drawing and refill up the paperwork as for a variance, is that, does that work as a continuance?
Right. Yes, well, let me make the motion to continue first, okay?
Okay, I'm sorry.
At the request of the applicant, I move to continue the public hearing to June twenty fourth, twenty first, twenty twenty three at seven P M and extend the time for writing the decision to September twenty first, twenty twenty three for the application of Todd Peratori, T J P Design Group LLC on behalf of Susan King for the reconstruction of a detached garage connected to the house such that it maintains the footprint on the north side and increases approachment into the setback on the east side and south sides at Four North Street, assessor's map number fifty one, lot number twenty one in District D filed with the Town Hall on March twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Vote, Jim.
Second. Approved.
James.
Approved.
Catherine, right.
Approved.
Sarah approves. So we've continued this application. You need to submit it as a variance and provide new drawings. I think that you need to discuss the lot line issue with the closing attorney. Does that make sense?
It does.
Um, because the the title has passed um, has approved and, you know, it's not something that Z B A would get involved in, but obviously is an issue with neighbors, so what we can do to get resolved. The challenge is timing. The for a June seven twenty first meeting, the notice has to be posted to the cricket by Monday morning. Town hall is closed on Friday.
Okay, we'll have our drawings in by tomorrow, that's not a problem.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, then then it would be posted as a new public hearing
For the variant?
Um, for the variance, um, at the June twenty first meeting.
And um, I might suggest that you guys review the language of variance and are familiar with the hardship you need to prove when you come back, just so we're all on the same page.
Okay.
Um, Sarah, it's Jim.
Yes, yeah.
Um, we we, um, that um, public hearing notice needs to be filed on the twenty ninth, which gives us the first, the
Oh.
You know, it gives us two full weeks.
You have time.
Okay.
Yeah, that's I just.
Gracias, guys.
That's a better, that's a better.
Yeah, everybody can relax.
Yeah. So if you can get it in next week, that would be good.
Alright, I just wanted to give the heads up on that.
Thank you.
Um, now, I need to have this continuing signed, are you willing to sign this? Sure, listen, okay.
How's that way left? Do you like my sister?
Yeah, and me too.
Yay.
It didn't stop me. It just gave me bad grades in handwriting.
Okay, so you understand what needs to be done?
Can Mrs. Glavsky, you want to know?
Yes.
Can Mrs. King, the current one, have to file the I G U, you know, what?
Yeah.
Um.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk, I know, I'm I'm. Just every day is a fun. I I wish I knew you were not the same person. We would have gotten it that earlier.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd see you next, see you next time.
Yeah.
See you next time.
Sorry.
Oh. There's some more here documentation here.
Alright, thank you.
Oh, oh.
Would you like, that's why we've had for Mrs. King to have to argue, we might wanna distribute it to that, Mr. Peratori.
It's so confusing.
I think that's why it says, we're not quite moving, you know.
Okay.
Well, I, you know, sometimes I am.
Okay.
I didn't know I needed to use my.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks.
Ms. Ms. Close this up with them, isn't anything we have to do?
Yes, we've got a whole bunch of stuff.
Really?
Yeah. Um, so we're moving to administrative matters and the first is to review minutes. Now.
Will you agree with them?
No.
Then I don't know what to do.
For nineteen minutes. Does anybody?
They look good, they look good to me.
They look fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from April nineteen?
Motion made to approve the minutes of April nineteen.
Do I have a second?
A second.
James, vote, Jim.
Aye.
James.
Approve.
Same.
Catherine, it's Sains, Brian approves and Sarah approves. Now, we also have to reapprove the minutes from three fifteen, is that correct, Gail?
It was, um. No, I think they were fine.
I thought we had, John had amendments.
Say that again.
John Benares had amendments to the three fifteen minutes.
Oh, I did, I did put in his correction, it, there was one word that needed to be changed from within to outside of the one hundred foot zone, so I did make that change.
Okay. And the. The other thing is that in the members present, Catherine Howe's last name is incorrect. She must have got remarried to Hall.
You guys are, I didn't even send flowers.
Yeah, you know, I've been really busy the best while.
Okay.
I'll I'll fix, I'll fix that also.
Okay, then I'll I'll take um a motion to approve amended minutes, these have to be reposted to the website.
We're waiting on you, Jim.
You gonna make the motion to approve amended minutes?
Again, you put on the roll, you put on roll, not on roll.
March.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of April nineteen?
No, March fifteenth amended minutes.
March fifteenth amended minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, vote, Brian?
Yes.
Catherine?
Approved.
Approved.
James.
Jim.
The extension is.
Approve.
And Sarah approves.
I understand the changes, neither.
Okay.
Give two words.
Decisions are all done, we're up to date on decisions.
Thank you, James.
Um, update on decisions appealed.
Yes.
Um, the one Dexter Lane appeal
Okay, yeah.
has been withdrawn uh, because the house is under contract.
As a single family.
To be sold on May thirty thirty first.
A single family?
I'm presuming that, but I don't know.
What was Dexter Lane, was that the one?
That was that.
The really beautiful old house they wanted to make into three condos and there was their buddy who, and no, 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 that was really mad about it.
Remember, we were the buyer in the two thousand.
Yeah, that was a gorgeous house.
And we were gonna each take out a unit.
It's under agreement already to be purchased as a single.
So. Yeah, I.
How'd you miss that?
I heard, um, I I, town council contacted me and said that the parties had agreed to um withdraw the appeal and that the special permit would just lapse by law in two years. And they, both parties were
Inevitable.
okay with that and and that, because it was under
Interesting.
Um, under agreement.
James is sitting going, how did I miss this?
Really?
Didn't see that in the M L S.
The sleep of the wheel.
Two Blossom Lane, everyone knows has been appealed. And I believe you've long received your packed one hundred and thirty six page package.
Yes, no.
No.
Uh, yeah, it came in, it came.
Certified mail.
Certified mail, yesterday.
That's why if you're not wearing them, you didn't get it, you just got a sticker from me that said, we tried to deliver your mail.
You also received an electronic copy.
I did not.
I did not.
I did not.
Well, I'll rectify that.
No, what about?
Wait, but you don't serve us, I mean.
What is the, I didn't even read the uh.
I haven't looked at it.
What's, you know what the issue is?
I haven't looked at it, John.
The basis for appeal, you mean?
I I haven't looked at it.
No, I don't know either.
It was a hundred, it was an electric, electronic copy, hundred and thirty six pages long, and I said, I'm not gonna sit here and print it and then I got the printed copy this week and I haven't had a chance to look at it.
I didn't get.
You don't serve electronically, okay.
I never get anything.
Um.
I'm gonna read it.
The forty B.
Yes.
Appeal.
What's going on?
Nothing.
Nothing.
H A C has to make a determination as to whether to approve M E C T and a private group of citizens citizens as interveners. On January nineteenth, they were gonna make that decision within two weeks.
Okay, it's not January nineteenth anymore.
Um, and they apparently have not made that decision, it's my understanding that Mister Engler is fighting it.
Meanwhile, if there's any upside to all this, the costs just keep on escalating.
I don't know on what basis. Well, we're not in a big rush, so.
No, I don't.
Engler.
Most parties are gonna have to drop out.
The next item I have, oh God. Is I received an email from Eduardo Levanko.
Oh, yeah.
Of fourteen Coolidge Point.
Ooh.
Um.
There's some money there.
He had not, he had, I think his mother died, they had a baby. So he, we issued the, we granted the special permit on April eleventh, twenty twenty two. Unfortunately, when that decision was written, it inadvertently provided only a one year limit for the special permit rather than a two year limit. And so he came to me and said, I haven't had a chance to start, one year is up, what do I do? So I was wondering if we would be, what?
I might have wrote it.
You wrote it?
And who reviewed it?
Um, let me tell you.
Because if he wrote it, I reviewed it and I said, okay.
Um, Jim Dietrich.
Oh, did I hear the God?
So.
I don't check to find print.
What?
I just look for commas and periods.
Well, that's your job.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Yes.
Um, before I read the motion, I'll just explain that we modify the special permit and um extend it out to
Two years.
April eleventh, twenty twenty three.
The year he was.
Should we do that, based on a clerical IR or something?
Yeah, I think so, I'll read the motion and then you can. I move to modify the special permit granted on April eleventh, twenty twenty two under section six point one point two and seven point five point two of the zoning bylaw to raise the existing non-conform. to raise the existing non-conforming single-family residence formerly a World War Two military tower and
That's the one. That was, alright.
Yes. On a non-conforming lot and replace it with a conforming single-family residence at fourteen Coolidge Point. Assessors Map number three, not lot number eleven in District E filed with the town clerk on December sixteen, twenty twenty-one to allow the special permit to lapse on April eleventh, twenty twenty-three. The second anniversary of the date on which the decision was filed with the town clerk unless construction has commenced. Based on a finding, the intention of the board was to allow the usual two-year period and the decision was inadvertently drafted to allow only one year.
Hold on. We want it to lapse on twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four? Cause we're in twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-four. Okay, thank you.
Twenty twenty-four.
We could have screwed up twice.
Could have had to redo it at the next meeting.
Um.
Thank you for paying attention, Catherine.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Jim seconds. Any discussion?
I was rushed.
You can't wait to get off this board fast enough, can you?
Okay, so Jim seconded it. Okay. So we'll take a vote. Jim?
Aye.
James?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
Brian?
Approved.
And Sarah says yes. I'll write it.
Good.
Since this is a little weird.
We just have to rewrite it, correct?
No, I'm just, I'm just doing a modification. I'm not rewriting the entire decision.
I could rewrite it. I have it electronically. I could just change the thing.
No, you can say it's a modification.
Okay. You'll change it anyway. If you got the original, you can change anything. One year to two years. That's it. Done. Sorry, we sent the wrong letter. Here's the, here's the correct one.
Typo in the original.
It's further messed up by James Mitchell and.
Okay.
Hey, I thought I was wrong once, but I made a mistake.
Okay. Um, the other few things I just wanted to mention is I would like to request.
This will be seven things here.
This is on the other administrative members, not reasonably invisible.
Meanwhile, it's their meeting.
Yeah. Um, that, I think we talked at some of the past meeting about changing some of the fees.
Yes, we have.
And what I've done, Gail and I have done a little research and our fees haven't been changed for empty million years. And when our fees were originally issued, um, the expectation was that the filing fee would be paid by the property owner. And the filing fee is a hundred and ten, um, which would bring it to three fifty. But then when you look at some of the other towns, it seems reasonable to me to raise it to five hundred and have the fee be the same for a special permit or a variance rather than separate, different amounts for each one. What are the, it would, what are the plots?
Huge jump.
Right?
From from three fifty to five hundred? And how many years has it been?
Fifteen.
That's not a huge jump.
Yeah, that was from one something five hundred.
I thought you said one, I thought you said one fifty.
Well, no, two two sixty or two eighty is what we charge now and then the filing fee is one ten.
So the total's gonna be five hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, originally they paid their filing fee and then we stopped doing that. So in effect, we decreased the fees without going yet. Um, I think that when you you talk about
Can we do it incrementally?
When you talk about the price of billing of a building, five hundred dollars is a drop in the bucket.
On some of the big projects.
On any project.
Yeah, I just, I just, I I hear what you're saying. I'm just thinking it's a, it's a big ass jump.
I don't, I don't think given inflation and the time that's lapsed, that that's a big jump. And I also think to Sarah's point that
Three two sixty, five hundred.
that's, that's a small percentage of construction cost.
But it will go to the select board.
Oh, good. You have a chance to pose it there.
Yeah. I'm just making a recommendation, right? Come to me and I'll say no then.
Yeah.
I'm just, it's again, it's, you know, what if fees are gonna be going up? I mean, are you changing and all kinds of stuff happening, so. Okay.
Okay. Um, the other thing is there's a revised application in process to correct all the zoning references. Um, the new zoning bylaw is up on the website.
I'm typing.
All the sections have changed.
Can we get printed copies of it? Like bound copies like they did the last time?
Gail?
I could get, I mean, do it myself, but.
Well, um, the story on the zoning bylaws is still going on.
Yeah.
And um, there are changes that are going to be brought up at town, special town meeting in June and then
That's still, that's fine, but what, the the board, the board needs to have the current bylaws because all, the sections are all different.
And it's easiest to look at them printed for me anyway and to go through the online, the hundreds of pages.
So is it possible for you to do double-sided printouts?
Yes, it is very possible.
Okay. I've done one. I don't need one, cause I've already printed it out.
We need to, but heads up, they are gonna change.
That's fine.
And then we'll have to reprint them again in August or whatever, whenever they.
We'll have to do it again. Okay.
Thank you, Gail.
Um, the other thing is, I think at some meeting I indicated that the lapse period for a special permit had changed from two years to three years. It did at the state, but unfortunately that was in Article nine that was passed over at the November town meeting. So we're still under the two-year.
We allowed, we were allowed to be more restrictive than the state.
Presumably, yes.
Okay.
Until someone appeals a decision and brings it up as a point.
No, the the, as long as we we don't go beyond what the state allows.
That's what I think. We're allowed to be more restrictive.
Yeah, we're more.
Yeah.
It's kinda like
It's kinda, I don't like it.
Con- consultation.
Yeah, I I don't like it, cause I
Saying consistent and confusing.
Well, and we don't want people coming back before us.
We don't want people.
You know? With construction the way it is, it takes a while sometimes.
That's true.
If it can take six months to get it through, go through the process, if it's only worth of appeals, I mean, you know, two years. Anything else?
I'm too scared.
Mr. Gates?
Uh.
Tim, James, two Desmond Avenue. I have an administrative suggestion. I've had a terrible time trying to chase down this four North Street proposal because it's not on the internet.
Right.
Trying to find Gail while I'm wandering around the town. She's just left. She's not in today. And she had, yesterday did email me a copy of the plans. But they came PDF and they came upside down. And I really couldn't see them. What I suggest administratively, when you have an item on the agenda, that there should be a computer link for anybody who's interested to read the entire document.
And then?
Obviously, four North Street has a lot more to, most of the drawings that I've seen, even upside down.
Right.
But the people with a swimming pool.
Yeah.
They have
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gates. I I think that, yes, that is something on our list of things to be done. Currently, it's a resource issue of being able to get all our applications up on the website.
Well, the drawings already seem to be on the internet because once the town clerk had emailed Gail, it just came.
I I don't I don't wanna get into a lengthy discussion about this. It's, it's a significant additional effort to get it up on the website. That's the challenge. And and I've been trying to do it for the last six months. So we're working towards it and I agree it would be a much improved process.
Yes.
And to have the decisions up there also. To have something by address up on the website where somebody could click on the address
And get what's going on.
and get all the materials associated with it and the decision.
Thank you for your feedback. We all agree with you.
You do agree with you.
I'm just not gonna do it.
No.
I have, I sent you, um, I was advised by the town clerk that my term is over in June.
Yes.
I sent you a copy of it, um, and so I will do whatever it is makes you happy. It's consistent with, you know, getting things done. And then we have to let the town clerk know, I guess.
Yes.
And if I have to take that ethics course again, I would kill somebody.
I know. I, yeah.
I could acquiesce. I'm taking it again.
Yes, so the situation we have is we have three terms up in twenty twenty-three. Jim and James and Brian.
And?
June.
Uh, I was just gonna say, um, John was just elected to school committee. Is he still gonna be on this?
Mm-hmm.
Was he all elected? Oh, great. He ran out of. That was, I know, I gotta tell you.
All I needed was one vote.
So we have one application for ZBA.
But you, are you saying, are you asking whether you need to re-up your term? Is that the question?
I'm happy to re-up. Um, we just need to let the town clerk know.
Yeah.
What what we wanted, what we're going to do and how we're gonna address it. And it, it doesn't have to, you know, we have at least until into June to let her know. It's not drop dead tomorrow morning. Yeah, I think there's uh, there's been discussions as to appointments. There's a new appointment policy. And the plan, I think the discussion was that two consecutive terms, basically the second term would be at the pleasure of the uh, the chair. And then come, if you want to stay on a third term, then it would have to go through the whole process of being, I don't know if it's approved by, approved or reintroduced by the select board. No, I'm not willing to interview with the select board. If they don't understand my No, 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 that, but it hasn't been, it hasn't been approved at this point. Now, I've asked to uh, instead of resigning, I asked to slide back into an alternate position and they wouldn't let me do it until the new, until the new fiscal year. It's unfortunate that more people in town don't step up and build these laws.
So James, you want off, is that correct? So James is not gonna renew.
I did two terms.
Yeah, um, Jim.
Three, you know, three terms and you got a chair.
Jim
A chair.
will renew, but not if he has to interview with the select board.
And it was preferably as an alternate, right?
Yeah.
Well, I I I don't really care. Consider this an interview with the select board. Donuts and biscuits.
I've expressed my opinion on this. And Brian?
I would like to slide into a
Re, go into an alternate.
Right, which would move Sean into a voting position.
Brian, alternate and Sean.
No. I appreciate, we have to be really careful because we've, all these town boards have been accused of being filled with stupid incompetent backward people. Well, thank you very much. You read that too? I did. I'm part of it. And so My IQ was thirty points lower than anyone else's according to Facebook.
Was thirty points lower than what?
The average or whatever, everyone else on the select board.
I didn't even know that.
Well, consider the source.
Um, okay, I will send an email to Debbie Powers.
Do we have applications?
One.
One. There's like a lot of people that, I mean, I'd like to get off this board. I told you that when I renewed my term, that I was only renewing to see the forty B through.
So, so what I would suggest is people
Stop looking for your replacement.
Try to find people might be interested.
Like if we put that as, we put that as a succession plan.
Tell people what an interesting job it is.
Yeah, fascinating. It is, it is interesting. It could be on the planning board.
It's interesting. It it was much better than the forty, than before we got the forty B.
It was much better before we got the forty B. It burned everyone out.
And and COVID and Zoom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And angry people accusing us of incompetence left and right.
It's not, it's not a difficult thing. Um, it takes a little time. It's time consuming.
It's time, yeah.
Um. For instance, I came from, so I had a select board meeting Monday night. I had a, today's Tuesday, right?
Wednesday. Today's Wednesday.
Today's Wednesday. So Tuesday, a site visit, that's what it was.
Oh, yeah.
This morning I had a meeting, then a six thirty, uh, five thirty meeting at the Pax Rec, then I'm here. And tomorrow, you know, so it's, I'm trying to find, I'm trying to find ways of just so if I can do this at all to me in an emergency, I'll do what happens. Cause it's, 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 truthfully, it's not a big time suck, but it's just another time suck.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think we were lucky for a number of years because of COVID, because people weren't traveling on business.
Yeah.
People weren't traveling, so people were available. Now all of a sudden
I think Catherine would stick around a little longer if she could bring a daughter, let her climb in her lap here in person.
She'd be, she'd use that cattle.
Okay, so I'll send that email and if people can think of people you think might be interested.
Well, how about a couple of Candace that didn't make it to the, uh, planning board?
That's all right.
They might not pass them.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, Sarah, I raised my hand.
Yes.
I just wanted to confirm there are actually two applications for next month.
Oh, we were talking about
Yeah, we were talking about applications for volunteering for ZBA.
Oh, well, we're lucky to have one.
Right. But yes, we do have two applications for next
Plus the continuation or is that included?
Yeah, no, plus the continuation. We have, um, we have one Seventeenth School Street who I've gone back to and suggested they need a variance. Um.
Is that the Stucko House?
No, that's a White House.
Okay.
And they're trying to add a nine hundred and fifty-three square foot accessory pool house and a pool on a non-conforming lot.
What's the other one?
What's the other one, Gail?
I, you know, I really don't know. It's another Brian Stein, but I don't have the address on the top of my head.
Butler, four Butler Ave.
There you go.
Just came up with it.
I don't know if it's true.
It is, it is.
Pull that right out of our We haven't received either of those yet, correct?
Correct. They've just come in, um.
Another continuation here.
The one Seventeenth School.
No, this, this
Of this continuation.
Yes, the lot line.
I have one question, Sarah. Brian, as a member of the select board, um, you should make The dullest one, oh, by the way. I'm sorry? The, the, the dullest one of the uh, of the board. Well, regardless, um, it would be good to make them aware how difficult it is to get volunteers to serve on these boards.
I think, I, okay, I understand what you're saying.
And I also appreciate the fact that they would like people not to be on there for life. That's smart. But if we're sort of between a rock and a hard place, um, we have to conduct business. And if we do it with the minimum, it's not fair to the applicants. So, um, my, my snarky comment about not wanting to go before the select board again was snarky. That wasn't meant to be snarky. But after that interview I had the other night with some of them. Oh, that's, and I fell off. I'm sorry. I was in the middle of, I was in a plane. I couldn't, I lost you. Yeah. Oh, you didn't miss anything. Great. So anyway.
What was the interview you had?
Uh, we can go into that. Let's get, end this meeting.
Should I had, is Jim received a notice from, is the town clerk?
Debbie Powers, you were on it also.
Okay.
What?
Was that, was it, was it the town administrator?
Debbie Powers, an email.
The administrative system.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, and it was, um, last week, I think.
What's that?
When did the email from Debbie Powers come?
Two days ago, I believe. Still on my phone. I could tell you like
I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something.
So around May
I didn't get any mail, but
or something.
I didn't either.
Fourteenth, thirteenth.
I have to check with my mailbox and see if there's a pink slip. It was Monday or
It wants to sticker it.
It was uh, yesterday.
Oh, it was just yesterday.
Yesterday morning.
I might go pick it up.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing good ever comes certified.
No.